Hello.
Um, Lee is flying across the Pacific Ocean at this moment or landing somewhere in foreign lands, lucky man. So he's excused from today's meeting. I'll just give it another minute for Tom to log in and think we're ready to go. Can you hear my dog chewing on the bone back there? Is that distracting?
No, we can't.
Neither of those things.
Keeps her quiet.
You start calling her name?
Sure. Don't know what you're gonna get. She might jump up on my desk. Hey, no sign of Tom yet. Let's give it one more, one more minute.
Karen, I don't see Frank either.
Right, you are Bob. I know. I know you're not Bob. Um, yeah.
It's Scott.
Yep. Okay, you're right. Frank is not here yet either. Usually flies in five minutes late.
Karen, how much is a quorum? Five?
I believe it's four. Is that right? It's a majority of the board? Okay, it's 4:02. I'm gonna call the Meeting of the Manzanita Planning Commission to Order. This is our regular date and time. Um, first item on our agenda is comments from the audience. If anyone has any thing they'd like to bring to the commission that is not already on the agenda or for which the record has been closed, feel free to raise your hand.
Karen, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, and we didn't get any notes or emails?
No emails, no.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, next item of the agenda then is to approve the minutes of April 24, 2025. I think you all have them in your packet. I have two notes. Um, one is at the top, second paragraph on the second page. The last sentence says Mary was asked if new zones would increase density, and I think we need to correct that to Marcy. And then the last one is just a clarification on the general updates. That there were no reviews scheduled for May and that we'll continue our code adoption conversation. I would end that sentence there and add that we might have a planning subdivision review in the month of June, just kind of separate those two concepts. Are there any other additions, corrections, names, spellings? Hearing none, entertaining a motion to adopt the minutes as amended?
I'd move to adopt as amended.
Thank you. Bert, is there a second?
Oh, second.
John's always good for a second. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, passes. Thank you very much. Leila has requested a little couple moments of our time before we start the substantial part of our business today. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to clarify our schedule, just for those that might be watching this now or later, and thank the commission for your grace in as we've tried to get this thing scheduled. So you have a work session today. We had originally planned to have the first public hearing on June 2. But we sort of missed the window by a couple of days in providing the Department of Land Conservation and Development notice. And we need 35 days, and we were just a couple of days short of that. So to be safe, we have moved the public hearing to your regular meeting on June 9 at 4:00 PM. And so we'll be noticing it as such, and that gives us the required notice that we need for DLCD. Um, I think what I ask the commission to do is to still hold the June 2 meeting if you need it in order to have any additional work done. So we would hold that meeting on the 2nd at 6:00. And I would just request that the chair check in with everyone at the end of the meeting and determine whether or not that meeting needs to be held. And then, again, the hearing date has been changed to June 9 at 4:00 PM. And so we will be sending out all of the the citywide notice for Measure 56 is actually gonna go out this week later with that date on it. And then we have a council work session this week on Wednesday at 2 o'clock, the normal council work session time via Zoom. And then proposing that the June 11 meeting also be a work session with city council with the first city council public hearing on July 9. So that keeps us on track. We're not really behind because of this change, but it does give us a little bit more time to work this through with council if needed and provide more opportunity for the community to hear about it and to weigh in. So just to recap, our commission meeting today on the 12th, city council will meet on the 14th for a work session, the optional June 2 meeting at 6:00 PM if needed, which you'll decide tonight. The first planning commission public hearing will be held at your normal meeting time, 4:00 PM, June 9. We expect a city council work session to discuss, assuming you adopt the ordinance amendments and recommend approval those at the June 11 meeting at 2:00 PM. And then we anticipate the first city council public hearing, the first reading of the ordinance at 6:00 PM on July 9. Hope you wrote all that down. Just kidding. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. I've updated the time on my calendar to 6:00 PM. I had it set for, so on the 2nd. Okay. Um, once there are any questions about that schedule, let's move on to continuing our work on the housing code amendments. Um, Marcy or Scott, who wants to take the, take the jump?
Go ahead, Marcy. It's your day.
Okay, yes. I'll just jump right into the code amendments. Start by thanking you for your time again to review all this material. And I noticed the packet that you received this time was even more pages than last time, so apologies for that. But there's a whole new section in there that's kind of important that we only talked about at the last meeting, and that is the design standards that apply. These are clear and objective design standards that apply to housing. I thought a a, I guess, a thorough way to go through this material would be just for me to pull up the PDF of your packet and actually go through it. I can go through it relatively quickly, the front part which you've already reviewed, but I did want to highlight a couple of places where I changed a standard or a definition in response to things that we discussed at the last work session. But before I go into that top to bottom kind of review, I want to find out what people are feeling about the amount of material that you've had in front of you for the last month and how you're feeling about it, if you have concerns and that you want to talk about at this meeting or at another work session. Uh, go ahead, Bert.
Uh, it's a delightful meal this time, although a very big one. Oops, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a multi-course meal this time, right?
That's right. A progressive dinner. Uh, could you just briefly on your contents of this package, explain each of these six items and uh, what parts of these we're trying to get adopted, you know, through this process? Because there's the code amendments drafts, the ordinance track changes, and then four attachments. Could you just like high level explain those just so I get a framework of it all?
Sure. So the first item is called the code amendments draft summary table, and that's supposed to give you an overview of the changes that the rest of the packet contains. It'll tell you which section we're amending and to a certain degree why we're amending it. So that's supposed to be a guide. And then the next item, the next attachment is literally your whole zoning code, your ordinance 95-4 with every little change, big or small, that we're making. And it will show strike-through text for sections that we're replacing entirely. And then in more minor miniscule changes will change a word and add new words right in the text. But along, I should say that 95-4 has some major changes to it. Like, you know, we're changing the entire, we're consolidating your residential zones. So another attachment will show what the news and another attachment entirely show you what those new zones look like. And that also shows you what the new maps will look like. So those two sections that are referred to from within the track change document or attachment, I'm sorry, or section number two are the new zones maps and the new land use districts.
But is that attachment A and attachment B?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. Attachment B is the new zones maps, and attachment C is the new land use districts. I would say a little out of order is attachment A because that's the land division. It's another ordinance entirely, but this is the replacement language for that.
And, and is all the language different in that document? Okay, so that's basically your new document.
Correct.
Is that true? Then obviously true for attachment D. That's all brand new.
Yeah, it's new text that'll be going into the ORD 95-4, which is the second piece of your packet. It goes into that document in a subsection called 4.160.
Okay, and in attachment A, the land division, is that 100% new or?
Yeah, it's 100% new. It's an entire replacement.
Okay, all right. That's, that helps.
Could I just mention that it's not 100% new to the planning commission because we've reviewed this before we started working on 94, 95-4 changes? Is that correct?
Yes, you've had this document since we talked about code concepts a couple of work sessions ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, please, Tom. You're muted.
God, you'd think by now we'd have figured that out. Maybe this is a copying error on my part, but I don't have an attachment B. Is there one so labeled in here? In the packet?
And when you scroll through, do you see pages that are entirely different size and they have maps on them?
I see attachment A that has, is two pages of maps with highlighting, showing what are the new zones comprising the old ones. But is attachment B? What is attachment B?
I'm almost wondering if you're looking at an older packet. Attachment B is the maps. So let me just show you what I see. I have the packet down that is, I downloaded it from the planning commission website.
Okay.
All together in one single PDF. And blow this up a little bit. So these are the contents of the package that Bert was asking about.
I've got all that up until, can you show me what you call attachment B?
Absolutely. Yeah, let me just scroll down to your zoning code is very long. And then the land division is very long. But when we get to the end of those two things, we have here there, the zoning maps.
Got that.
You have that. Okay, so this is it's called attachment A. I don't know if it is, is that the correct number? And then attachment C is the new zones. Um, this is text that will go into ordinance 95-4, but I put it into a new document. So it's
What I'm looking for is B. I'm sorry. Attachment B, something denominated attachment B. Is there one?
Okay, so hang on, let me go.
If I could just jump in real quick, um, I think the way that we sent this out to the planning commission in pieces, the maps are labeled here as attachment A, but the name of the attachment, which I actually just forwarded to you, Tom, just in case, is called attachment B. So I think Marcy, probably the maps just need to be relabeled as attachment B.
So the second page of what appears is attachment A is actually attachment B?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you, do you want me to relabel that for the posting on the website? Leila?
Yeah, we can, we can also do that. Oh, no, I can't. You have the PDF. So yeah, if you could relabel it and send it over, I'll, I'll replace it.
And, and I assume, and not to get too nitpicky, but ultimately that there will be a map that has the zones labeled as they will become. So instead of looking at the old zoning numbers, R1, R2, and then dropping down to the caption and seeing, well, highlighted means these things, you'll actually have a map that says image 1, image 2, image 3.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, but it's, I thought it was easier for people to see it with the old, the existing land designation on it for now.
For now.
All right, any other questions about orientation to the material or just a general kind of check in how people are feeling about the amount of material, the general things they don't quite understand? Okay, well, I'm not hearing, but I know you'll, you'll let me, any of you will let me know as we go through the material. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen again, and then we're gonna go through from the top. And so here we are with the contents of the package, and I wanted to let you know that this is my hoped-for agenda for this meeting, that we discuss the packet that you received, but mostly we focus on the changes that I made in response to your April work session. And then I want to share some form-based approach concepts to the building envelope, and I'd like to get your recommendation so we can move forward on that piece for in track change language. So those are the, really my two main goals for this meeting. Oops. All right. So let me just go through this by showing you where I made changes. This new section here, sorry, I'm still not getting this, the view I need. The table of contents now includes section 4.160, middle housing supplemental provisions. This is a substantial new piece that you didn't have before. And this includes design standards for all of the housing types, and then design standards that apply specifically to college, cluster, and courtyard apartments, and ones that apply specifically to townhouse, townhouses. And I wanted to highlight when that one, we're in definitions now, we do have a new updated definition of dwelling, dwelling, where I noted at the last meeting that I was discussing this with people at DLCD and Hapo because there have been land landlord tenant law updates and some of the definitions of what's, who's a tenant, who's a resident, what's a household, what's a family, what's a dwelling have changed, and we want to be consistent with that. And we also want to make sure that we don't prohibit, preclude any small units like we were talking about at the last meeting. Bert specifically brought up cohousing. And so this is worth a little bit of concentrated discussion here, I think, because there are a couple of different ways we could go on this. There is, there's one approach to redefining a dwelling that doesn't put any requirements for facilities. It leaves it open. And it simply says that a dwelling is any building or portion thereof designed or used as the residence or sleeping place for one or more persons. And then we go, I go on to specifically state that this is not, this classification does not include other uses that you have in your code, which are adult foster homes, residential homes, or residential facilities. The companion piece to this is family in that we've, we've eliminated the definition of family. And so the discussion I'd like to have here, if people are interested in this issue, is, is this sufficient? Because what I have done is struck, I struck all the language that was proposed to be included in other discussions that you've had. Uh, this language was something that you had discussions about when you discussed accessory dwelling units at an earlier point in the planning commission prior to my involvement. But I, I borrowed it and I put it here because this is what you were proposing to use. All of this language would actually be in conflict with state law now, but some of it may be desirable, or you could go toward not defining it at all. Is this an issue of concern to anybody on the planning commission? Karen, Chair?
Yeah, I, I don't know where we stand with state law, but it seems to me that a dwelling should also include cooking or eating space and personal care facilities. I, I can't imagine that, well, I, and this is again, my imagination is probably pretty limited, but I would hate to see someone rent a townhouse that doesn't have a bathroom in it or that they can't have a place to prepare and store food safely. So those are the two things that seem important to me in addition to a place to lay your head at night.
Okay.
I, I'm willing to argue with anybody else if they have different thoughts about that or.
Yeah, I, I think you would want to, this would be for uh, cohousing, which typically the dining facilities will be a central common kitchen and living room building. And then independent kind of sleeping areas or sleeping units. And so maybe it's access to food preparation as opposed to having it within the unit or something. And then I guess the only other question is when you say a building or portion there in designed or used as a residence or sleeping place, if that becomes the dwelling unit, then you know, does that, that mean parking space for each of those?
Uh, that's a good question, but I want to point out that we, because of discussion we had at the last work session, when we get to parking, you will see it that there's an exemption for dwellings that are under 500 square feet. No parking is required. That's something that we discussed at the last meeting. I thought that was a good idea. So does that answer that issue, Bert?
I, I think so, but maybe others have, have doubts.
John?
Well, yeah, I don't say you can have an actual dwelling unit without a bathroom or I'll use the term kitchen, but you know, a place to, as Karen said, store and cook food. Cook can be, you know, it could be a cooktop or a, it doesn't necessarily have to be an oven or maybe better than a microwave or an air fryer, but I know to skirt certain provisions in other jurisdictions, they will leave off a piece of that cooking thing so they don't get whoever said, you know, parking or something like that, but and Bert, cohousing has a cooking facility and bathrooms, right? I mean, I mean, you share some, but they still have them.
Well, definitely the bathrooms, yeah.
Yeah. If, if the kitchen were in a separate building that was shared by a community of dwellings, it still has you know, a place to cook. Am I, I'm not a cohau, I'm not, I think I'm not a cohousing expert, but that's all true, right?
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe just simplify it to, you know, you know, bathroom, food preparation, whatever.
Storage.
Or access to a common food preparation area. Just might be.
Access is a good way of putting it. I like that. Yeah.
Okay, I do have a definition kind of in the wings that meets that that greater standard than this sort of minimal standard that I have here. So I'll bring that back to you at the next meeting. But before we move from this topic, I see that Tom and Brad had their hands up. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so I'm a little confused why this matters to us, what's inside the structure. Um, I presume that it who's, whoever building it is gonna put in it whatever who's, who's ever building it is going to put in it whatever people require. And I, I didn't like the definition before where it had, you know, garbage disposal. There's all sorts of amenities and I imagine over time they will change. Indeed, I lived the first 20 years of our living together, my wife and I did not have a garbage disposal, but I still thought we had a dwelling. But why do we care what's, what's inside the space?
Yeah, it's a good question. There's a lot of, a lot of, this listing here that you see struck through is a conventional list that has been in, I think, copy pasted in codes for decades and it has been, maybe it was created specifically to prohibit things like single room occupancy dwellings or to make it more difficult or without thinking about cohousing or multi-generational families. So it's generally not what we would want to do. It's really here more for kind of to illustrate the point. But do, but you could go with nothing or you could go, I think I'm hearing the direction of this conversation go with some minimal definition of facilities, sanitary facilities, food preparation, facilities, but, but minimal and or maybe even providing access to rather than in the unit. And that would free up some options for you in the future. If you say do want to explicitly permit a single room occupancies dwelling types, then that this would leave you a bit able to do that without having to go back and amend this definition. So that's just, I'll stop talking and let Brad, you have a question?
I do. So independent of what goes inside, are we possibly missing a dwelling type? Not to go backwards, but we seem to be missing prefabricated or modular. Is there a reason for that?
So there is another section in the code where I, I do urge you to update dwellings. I think it's under M manufactured dwelling. There are, there's much better guidance now and common definitions for modular, prefabricated, manufactured and modular housing. And the, these model, the DLCD wrote a model code to help cities update their kind of outdated language regarding these. It's not part of this project, but I think that this should flagging this for something that you should do in the next update of the code. So I don't know if that answers your question, Brad.
Well, I mean, I, I did follow it under the, the modular or excuse me, yeah, under the manufactured rather. When would we be waiting then? Cause I think it's a pretty important designation to address. So when we talk about maybe doing it at a later date, is that next year, this year or, or when?
I think these are things that you would, I, what we have, the way we've talked about these additional code amendments. My job really regarding them is to list them so that you can follow up with them later, but as a result of the comprehensive plan update, I think you would name these actions, these as actions that the city needs to undertake.
So you're advocating that it gets addressed, but not now?
Yeah, because this, this project is really limited to incorporating middle housing into your.
Well, I think that's where, that's why I bring it up because I think prefab and modular addresses middle housing or can address middle housing pretty effectively.
Sure, I agree, but there's nothing in your current language that prohibits middle housing from being prefabricated or modular.
Because we go silent on it?
Because your current definitions still permit and you still permit that housing type in the zones that we're changing. But I'm not proposing to remove the definition for manufactured homes that you currently have.
And you think it would fall under there?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Marcy.
Sure. Sure, Reddick.
Oh, um, yeah, thank you. I want to just dogging, dogging the what goes into a dwelling. You know, I think originally the concern was is that people would be renting their garage out, you know, for a short-term rental or for a long-term rental, you know, kind of under the without permitting it through the building department. And I understand that a garage might be a perfect place to, for an ADU or for a, you know, additional housing unit, but I would want to make sure that that garage has access, unlimited access to a kitchen and a bathroom. I would hate to have a landlord tenant dispute and a, and somebody get locked out of the bathroom or the shower in the main house because the landlord is, you know, locks them out. I guess, you know, I really want to keep picking at that to make sure that we're not permitting places that aren't adequate for people to actually live in. And I understand the cohousing and the access, but I wanted, I just, I want to keep picking away at that to make sure that, that the citizens that are renting or, you know, living in a, a home here can live comfortably and equitably. And maybe this is the wrong place to, to do that, but it seems important to me.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion because I think this, this issue, it's a little in the weeds, but I do think it's really important and we have to get it right for Manzanita, but also so that you can incorporate housing types that you may not, that aren't part of this project in the future and not have to go back and change the definition.
Marcy, can I ask a question? I, I may be out of line here, but I was wondering about is there an alternative would be to maybe define a dwelling unit with a bath and a potential and kitchen or kitchenette and then have a specific definition for co- cohousing or senior, single occupancy residential? Would that be an alternative or is that too complicated?
Too complicated.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's why I asked.
Sorry, I thought I was unmute. I'm talking to myself.
Tell us what you really think, John.
I never do that.
Could I just offer a comment to, I have my hand up, but I'm totally just cutting a line. Just with respect to the chair's comment. The building code is a separate thing that's governed by the state. And so that is where we would issue a permit would be for, it would have to meet residential building code standards. So if somebody just converted a garage and didn't improve it to meet that level of occupancy, it, it wouldn't get permitted. Just to, I just want to clarify that, that the building code does help address some of, some of the issues in terms of like the quality of, of housing. So you can't just have a shed and tell somebody that they can live in it, you know, it has to meet certain standards that the state requires in order for us to issue a permit. And I know the building official will correct me if I'm speaking on a turn here, but.
Yeah.
That's the only reason I have my hand up, Leila. I, I was just going to point out that we don't really need to, this list of things over here because the building code covers most of it.
Yeah.
I believe, I mean, Scott, I think is on, on the Zoom, so he can probably you know, let us know if we missed something, but I, I believe that is true.
So this has been very helpful discussion. I don't know why I have my hand up. I didn't raise it. And I'm going to say, I'll come back to you with a definition that isn't as minimal as this, but isn't as, it, it's not as minimal as if this were completely struck through, but it's also not what is here, what is proposed here. So look for this at the next meeting and update on this topic.
Marcy, if I may, I, when, I think that the term should be dwelling unit. You've struck unit. But what appears throughout the other definitions is references to dwelling unit or dwelling units, plural. So I think the term should be dwelling unit, not just dwelling.
Well, that's a deliberate choice to, I'm not sure where you're seeing units. We've, that is, that's a practice that most of these middle housing code amendments are taking out unit and simply calling it a dwelling. For example, this.
Well, down below, it means dwelling, multi-unit.
Multi-unit, right.
Means a building containing five or more dwelling units. If a dwelling is something different than a dwelling unit, then I don't know what that definition.
A really good point, Tom. That's actually something that should be struck, five or more dwellings. Yes, you're correct. I mean, these, yes, got it. Thank you. That's a really good flag. Okay. How do I get my hand down? So now we're going to move on to additional changes that I made. So I wanted to point out that the height of the building, we have, we still have to discuss some things regarding the building envelope before we come to a couple of different resolutions for this, but one is to define the height of a building in a way that allows for sloped lots and roofs. That's not here yet, but it will be. There's also the issue of the height itself. You know, they think that's the height itself is what we came to, what we came to an agreement of some consensus about at the last meeting was that we are not going to raise the height. We're going to keep the height at 28.5 because the increase for affordable housing will likely go into effect whenever there is an affordable housing project. And even though we discussed that legislation that you all kind of used for the first time with the project recently, that's not likely to sun, it may not sunset. You may be living with that provision for the foreseeable future. So we will keep the 28.5 height where it is. There any further discussion about that point, Brad? Okay, Brad, do you mind taking your hand down if you can figure out how to do it? Um, John?
Is it possible to leave the 35 feet and specify only for middle housing?
Yes, that's what, only, no. Well, middle housing is any housing now. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying not middle housing maybe, but whatever the, the proper definition of whether it's low income or you know, the, the type of facility that the state mandates, we add the 10%, but we would like to bump it up another three feet, I thought.
For affordable projects.
Affordable, there you go. Thank you.
But I believe that where we landed was that is likely to be grant, asked to be granted by the developer. And if you raise it to 35 feet, even more would be granted by, could be granted by the develop, to the developer.
In other words, if you say, if we raise it to 35 feet, we may have to give them another 10%?
Right.
And we can't specify this. Okay, I'm, I'm trying to back, go to 35 and back off 10%, which is maybe four feet and say our standard would be 31 and then we can give them, you know, 3.1, some, where the math works.
Uh, John, I, I think we're kind, kind of already covered just because of the state law for the affordable stuff. And you know, the only, and I, I agree with the 28.5, the, the only modification might be for you know, a percentage of a project that meets the requirements of the state affordable housing bonus. You know, say 40% of any project that has units that meet all the restrictions and requirements. Maybe we say that project, if it has the minimum of 40%, can get the state bonus.
Yeah, but the state bonus gets us to eight feet floor to floor.
Well, I, I think the state bonus actually gets you an additional story. And that was the, how they got the nine floor to floor. And that solved that problem for him. So, you know, that, that would be a commission decision or recommendation to say that in order to incentivize more affordable housing, say somebody had a, you know, fourplex or something and 40% of that fourplex, which would have to be at least two units were affordable, then they could get that bonus. That's just a way to maybe get the private sector to deliver more potentially affordable units.
So this is a splitting hairs, but if, if the bottom two units were nine feet floor to floor, I'm sorry, or call it 10 feet floor to floor, which gives the interior of the unit nine feet, which is a discussion point we had with the Manzanita Pines. How do we get, if, if we allowed two stories to do that, would the third story bonus be the same?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point. It may be too complicated to, to integrate with this effort, but in, in that case, it's really two to three floors, right? That's, that would be.
It's really two to three floors, exactly. And, and we want to give.
Maybe the provision would be 33%. And so a, a three level project would have one of the levels be affordable housing. And it'd have to meet all the, you know, easement stuff and.
All the other.
Stuff and all that.
Requirements, right.
Yeah, condominium.
If we can do that, maybe Marcy's.
Yeah, well, I, I've done that in many projects that have had, did a project in a couple of projects in Portland, actually, but a portion of the building are actually condominiums and affordable units in a market-based project.
I'm hearing that, so another, one of my tasks was to define a story and I think that we need to reconcile the definition of story with the way that a story is referred to in 1537.
Is 1537 the state law?
Correct.
Anyway, I, that, that's just a suggestion. If we wanted to, you know, have a more integrated approach to the affordable housing as opposed to all standalone affordable housing projects, but maybe that's for a later discussion.
So I'm, I'm wondering if that would be more of a policy that the city council would undertake or whether that's something that needs to be defined in the, in the ordinance?
Pretty sure the ordinance is council policy. I mean, I think I know where we want to get. I just don't know how to get there from here.
Can you articulate for me where you would like to get, John?
Okay, for an affordable housing project, I would like to, I, I would like to do what we did when we had our discussion on Manzanita Pines. All right, we, we gave them the extra story, but we also gave them the The. Nine foot headroom or the ten foot floor to floor height. For the overall project. Which gave them an upgrade to the. Quality of their environment. Um, and I would like to somehow. Codify that in our ordinance, and I don't know how exactly.
Hey, but yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you. I will try to come back with something that does that. I think the ones little.
Sorry, Marcy, you weren't there when we had this discussion on Manzanita Pines, so you're kind of.
You described it to me and I feel like I, I would have. I would have been advocating for those things too, if I had been a planning commissioner in that situation. But, um, I think that the, I may come back to, I will come back to you with a proposal. And I think we may still have an issue with the. What fifteen thirty seven can still require a city to do that. So I need to look into that more. Okay, um, moving on to, um, I'd like to actually change gears a little bit and talk about. Something that's more of a concept at this point. At the last meeting, we talked about. Um, I think generally there was a discussion about what's the height of buildings? What's the shape of buildings? Maybe people are, uh, were open to the idea of having more dwellings. On the site, um, on a lot. But we're concerned about. How much form, um, how much bulk and massing we're likely to see. So in combination with the. Three thousand square foot cap on primary dwelling. And the FAR of point six to one that we're imposing on all development. Um, I've, I would like to show you some explorations that we did about how to, how to control. The shape of the house a little bit better than currently you, your code does. So let me jump to this. Presentation at the end that, um, you just put together. So we could talk about this. So right now, the issue is that. I think the issue becomes, um, it becomes more of an issue. Because we are going to allow really somebody to develop completely to the building envelope. Up to the six point six five to one FAR, which is, is, that's a lot of development capacity. Um, it is, as we discussed last meeting. Comparable to what you have in your commercial zone. As, as of your recent update. So we're allowing the same amount of FAR in your residential zone as we are in your commercial zone. And we are, we have this building envelope that is currently defined by your. Just zoning ordinance. So some of the issues that I see are that you will likely see. More homes developments, middle housing for good. Things for good reasons, coming in and maybe taking advantage of that whole building envelope. At the same time, you also, I think, want to be able to allow driveways. And, and access to the rear of the lot for parking, additional parking, maybe on the side of parking at the rear. And you also have kind of an opportunity to rethink how the front yard might be used. And so we've just gone through some little tests here. What would happen if this, um. Your current building form, this is that side yard height plane that you've defined in your code. For those of you who, who are familiar with this. Um, it goes up to twenty eight point five. It comes down. To an eight point, eight feet from the side setback. But your side setback is officially, side yard setback is officially five feet. At ten feet, it sort of slants, it's allowed to, it's forced to slant in a bit. Right? Um, so if there's more development on the back of lots. Uh, you could see development coming right up to the edge of the back of the lot within five feet of the setback. That's one issue you might. Want to avoid. Um, another is if you don't make some kind of allowance for a driveway. You're likely to lose a lot of side yard. So one of the questions I wanted you to consider was, would you allow a driveway to be? Only three feet from the property line? That's one question. Another question is, would you allow encroachments like porches into the front setback? Would you? Actually allow, um. This is, this is a drawing that shows, uh, yeah, encroachments for all middle housing development. And then a third variation, which shows a, a different. Height plane, side yard height plane that operates at the back of the site. That would avoid this, um. Twenty eight point five. Foot wall from going all the way up on the back part of the site. So if you're, some of you might be having a hard time seeing this. This is a two part side yard height plane. On the front of the lot to about halfway back, it operates the same as it does today. But, uh, toward the middle of the lot, it actually drops, um, onto as into a straight diagonal. That would prevent a house of this shape from being on this part of the lot. And I think the final kind of, um. Discussion point I wanted to have was, would we be willing to talk about a front setback that's not twenty feet? So the point of all of these studies is to address looming. Massing toward the back of the lot. Use the front of the lot more effectively, maybe twenty. It seems to me twenty feet got some questioning at the last work session. And maybe it's better used for more housing. And then thinking about how people are going to be using their side yard. And whether we might want to consider that a driveway is treated differently than a building. What are people thinking about this, Bert? Yeah, I mean, you're muted, Bert. Bert, you're muted.
I think it's terrific and that driveways also should be limited to a maximum of ten feet, you know, in width.
They are, and that's in that code today.
Okay, and then.
Proposed.
Yeah, and then three feet. You know, sounds adequate if we're going to get the housing that we need. I do agree that that twenty foot front yard setback is probably. Uh, another constraining element to getting more housing on the lots. And I think you had, uh, some design guideline stuff that, uh. Had, uh, a suggestion of a ten foot setback, if I remember. Uh, and then the porch coming into that setback, or maybe it was a fifteen foot setback with the porch coming into that. And, uh, so anyway, I think, uh, I think all that is, is good stuff. Uh, I like the, the sloped plain stuff because I think another recommendation that I'm going to make is that we. Uh, have a minimum six twelve sloped roofs. So we don't get these big boxy things that seem to be growing around town. So, uh, yeah, I think we need to do some relief and it's different. Uh, than what, what we've had, but I think, uh, if we're gonna. Not have streets with just lines of garage doors. We needed to give some relief to this, uh, potential for, uh, access to backyard garages. And that's, that's happening all across the country, actually.
Six and twelve roof slope is what you are proposing?
Well, that's, that's me. I think that would be one way to keep the character of our village, uh, more, uh. You know, in keeping with the past, but. That's just me.
Thank you. Very helpful. John, and then Chair.
Well, I, first of all, I agree. With Bert on the driveway. Our issue, or at least my issue, is the massing on site. And I don't really think driveway is not really a massing issue. And the three feet allows for enough landscaping to kind of soften the edge a little bit. I probably won't follow Bert out the window with the, um, six and twelve. Only because I've seen so many houses in the Midwest with twelve and twelve pitches. It's just a sea of. Brown, gray, you know, dunes across the prairie and it. Diversity is one of the issues I would somehow like to. Foster in our form based zone. I, I, the. Ten feet is okay in terms of the front yard setback, but I've seen. Various communities do like a percentage of that. Okay, you're allowed. You, your, your setback is twenty feet, but you're allowed. Fifty percent of it to be ten feet or something, you know, fifteen feet, something else. To allow, uh, again, some diversity. In, in our community currently, um. You see so many houses that are just exactly what Marcy has designed. They've got this three foot little bump on the side that comes out, um. And unless you, if you're gonna do a gable. End on the side instead of on the front, you pretty much have to. You know, it's a, it's an eight foot setback and you've got a little three foot bump on the bottom. Um, and I'm not a fan of that because mainly because so many houses have that. Um, again, if we can encourage diversity, whether it's six and twelve, twelve and twelve, or. You know, less than six and twelve. I don't want to, you know. My house has got a two and twelve pitch on it. So I'm not gonna. You know, I, I don't want to preclude doing. But I, I'd like to see as much diversity as possible built into this. Uh, that's however you can do that, Marcy.
So you're not so sure about six and twelve? You'd like to see shallower slopes permit?
No, I'd like to see diversity. I don't know how to do it. I, whether if six and twelve is what we come up with. That'd be great, but I would like to see it, um. You know. If you're gonna go twenty eight feet, if you're gonna do a one story house. Why force? Why force the design into a six and twelve? If you're gonna two story house, maybe that's different. I, I don't know, or, or say. Fifty percent has to be fifty percent has to be this, or fifty percent has to be something else. But again, I don't want to, uh, I don't want every house in Manzanita to look the same. And I feel if we start. Putting those kinds of, um. Restrictions on it, they will end up.
I think what, what Bert is saying is six and twelve minimum, so somebody could do anything steeper.
Yeah.
It's just a minimum.
Again, for a one story house, your, your goal is to preclude a two foot. A, a two story, um, flat wall. That's my, that's what I'm trying to preclude. Um, and, and the huge mass. If we're gonna go two stories. Maybe you say the envelope has to be. Um, six and twelve, but give them ten feet of, you know. Uh, you know, the bottom ten feet doesn't need to call, doesn't need to conform to that or the bottom sum number. Twelve feet, whatever you want to do. Anyway, throwing that out there, diversity is what I'd like to encourage, not uniformity.
Okay. Chair?
Um, I just wanted to say that I grew up in Denver in one of the old neighborhoods. The house I grew up in is now about a hundred twenty five years old. And the houses were built with a driveway between. And that was all there was between the houses that I grew up in. So, um, I think that's perfectly fine, especially if two, uh, lots want to share that driveway. I think that would be delightful. I, I'm, I don't object to the three foot side, um, on a driveway side. If we, you know, on a side, uh, I wouldn't object to nothing on the side, um, of a driveway. But for greenery and, you know, it's probably better to have some, some greenery or some space in between. That's not concrete. Um, or asphalt. But I also want to call attention to, there's at least one building in town. Um, it's a mixed use building in the commercial zone, but instead of having. The roof pitched like this. It's pitched like this. And so the sides of the building go all the way up to twenty eight. But eight, because the pitch of the roof. Was cleverly hidden. Um, inside the, the, I don't know, I don't know what, how you'd call it, but that I would just object to that twenty eight foot. Solid wall. And I think, I think John was talking about that. Too early or Bert, I'm, I'm not sure. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that we are. Builders are very. Interesting people and architects are very devious. That's no offense to any of the architects. I'm just saying, um, that, that for that diversity, um, we can. I think we just need to be aware of the ways that people. Manipulate. And so I'm, I'm interested to talk more about this side yard. What did, what did you call it? Side yard plane, I guess.
Side yard height plane. Now, thanks for mentioning the, uh, shared driveways that we, I, I plan to bring. Language specifically that would allow that to occur. I think you, if you read the Townhouse Design Standards, that allows shared driveways. So a question might be, would we apply that to all housing types? Um, Tom?
Thank you. Uh, everyone knows from prior meetings that I'm architecturally challenged. So I, I have a couple of questions that are probably stupid, but I'm gonna ask them anyway. Um, first regarding the setback. I, I, I'm okay if the house advances towards the street as long as what's advancing. It is a porch or a deck and not a garage. What I find oppressive is to. As a pedestrian is to walk down the street and. Have garages lining there. I mean, I'd much, I'm. I'd much rather have. A porch, somebody sitting there, a neighbor you could talk to, some greenery, some, you know. Potted plants, whatever. So I'm assuming when you're talking about moving the houses forward. Are, that's my question. Are you talking about? Moving garages closer to pedestrians or just?
No, yeah.
Okay.
Only things like porches or the front facade of the house. And I can't remember where this language is, but we do require, we're proposing to require. The garage to be set back from the front facade of the house. In, in any housing type. Avoiding that, that snout house. Tendency that you're describing. It's, some people call it the snout house when the garage sticks forward before, um, in front of the house.
And, and worst of all is when the garage door is open and I get a look in and see that theirs looks like mine and it's not. Shouldn't be open for public inspection. Okay, great, I'm all in favor of that. Uh, the other thing is, there's been talk about. The, the slope. Six and twelve, twelve and twelve. I assume one of those is the X axis and one is the Y. I don't know which is which.
Like a twelve and twelve means it's forty five degree angle. And a six and twelve means it's, it's, um, I think a thirty degree angle, is that right?
Okay, so then.
Sorry, took a half.
The six is the height, so it goes, it flattens. Compared to the twelve and twelve.
Right, yes, exactly. It's flatter, it's a, it's a less of a pitch.
All right, well, I'm for. Less extreme pitches and, and also I, I don't like. Walls all the way up. I find that oppressive too. Thank you.
Sure, um, so any objection? Sure. So any objections to our pursuing this rear yard side, side yard height plane that is different, or I should say, any objection to pursuing these two different side yard height plane recipes, like one on the front and one on the back?
Where would you split that, Marcy?
About 55 feet. About, yeah, about, well, if, if we can build more in the front yard, it would be exactly halfway behind, in, in the middle of the lot, so 50%.
Would it be half of the building area or half of the side?
The lot area.
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
The halfway point of the lot.
Marcy, would this apply to quadruplexes, et cetera, et cetera? Or is this really duplex?
Yeah, this is a, that's the next detailed, uh, weedy thing I'd like to talk about. And I guess I can just talk about looking at this picture without showing you the code language. But what, there are three parts basically to this type of a plane. One is where, how far you set back, how high you go up before you have to slope, and then what is the slope? There's, in this, in this version on the front, the one that you currently have in place, there's actually a third formula, but set that aside for a moment. It's usually a pretty simple three-part formula, the side, the height, the slope. We can apply that differently in different zones. So we've talked about the R, the middle housing one zone being the more smaller lot, older neighborhood, we might have this exact, exactly what you're seeing here applied there. But in, in the other zone, the middle housing two or the SRR middle housing, perhaps we let the side yard, perhaps we don't impose another flavor on the back of the lot, or perhaps we make the side yard height higher. Any thoughts about that? Not seeing any, so welcome back with Cher. Thank you.
I, I'm not really sure that I follow. We're talking about, and the size of a dwelling can be no larger than 3,000 square feet, right? Not including the garage or including the garage? I mean, I'm just, I'm just, and I can't remember if we just talked about a building footprint or if we talked about a total square footage.
Talked about total square footage. The first unit can be 3,000 square feet maximum. And we, we didn't exempt the garage from that. That includes the garage.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that, that makes sense to me then. Thank you. I, I just am concerned about, you know, like you said, some neighborhoods already have a lot of larger homes on them. And so to fit with the rest of that neighborhood, larger homes are probably okay. And then smaller ones would be, yeah, so I, I like the direction you're going with that. Thank you, Marcy.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Marcy, our core village, which is the currently the R2 zone, that is gonna be our middle housing one zone, I believe.
Yes.
That is the most restrictive in terms of size and, and scale and, am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay. Well, I agree with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that discussion. We'll move forward with a specific track change language proposal for that concept. So I wanna talk to you now about the design standards and then we can be done here. But the design standards is a whole new section. So let me locate that in the packet. So it is called Attachment D and it is in your code in section 4.160. 4.160 is a really catch-all chapter section where you have supplemental standards for all the different uses. It's a vast chapter, but we are going to use portion of it for the design standards for middle housing. So quick overview of this, the purpose of this section is to, is to establish some simple, clear and objective standards for all housing that can be approved without a design review process. And so the design standards are basically, they're about articulation, eyes on the street, main entrance and detailed design. So on articulation, so to John, your point earlier about having a 28-foot wall, things like articulation would not allow that. Now, the eyes on the street require that a certain percentage of the area have, be windows. It would require that the main entrance face the street or be visible from the street. And then finally, that all street-facing buildings ha, must have some architectural features on them. Can I answer a question, Tom, or do you have a comment?
Yeah, you, you skipped over the part I was most concerned with on this. If you back up a little, what leapt out at me is the term neighborhood character, which is hopelessly vague and has been used to stifle all manner of housing and, and even more, is covered for more nefarious acts. I, I don't know how you define the character of a neighborhood. I don't know that anyone would actually agree on that. But promoting neighborhood character is kind of the all-purpose battle cry in, in my experience of people that don't want certain types of housing, especially affordable housing and diversity of housing. I, I would prefer that we not put that anywhere in our these supplemental standards. I'm, I'm happy with most of the other terms, housing choice, pedestrian priority, safe bicycle environment, all of the design objectives, everything is, is, is okay by me. But if you put in our goal here is to promote neighborhood character, you're, everybody is going to use that to oppose anything that they in particular don't like for all sorts of, as I said, maybe even nefarious reasons.
Okay. I think.
Everybody says that, that, this, oppose this development because it'll change the neighborhood character. Well, what is the neighborhood character? The neighborhood character is what we have now and we like it. We don't wanna see it to change in ways that, that the rest of all our changes to this development code or, or revisions of it are trying to change our housing and bring more diversity and affordability and all sorts of objectives. And everybody's gonna point to this and say, hey, we can't do that because that's not the character of what we got now.
I share your passion on this issue and I, I'm happy to strike this term. And it doesn't change, in my view, any of the other, of the goal of this paragraph. So the attention to detail, human scale and pedestrian-oriented design, those things.
All that's great. Yes, the term appears again down below, neighborhood character. I, I just don't wanna have something that people can hang their head on and, well, I like, I mean, everything else complies with this, but it's not the character of our neighborhood.
Where's the other incidence of neighborhood character? Is it the unique character of neighborhoods?
Well, then you have the whole, you have a term, neighborhood character, that it seems to be you're defining it there in that very line. And unique character, I mean, have we designated what is the character of any particular neighborhood in our city? I don't think so. I, and I imagine most people would have different.
You know, it's interesting that you, that you're bringing this up. So I would say be on the lookout for this within your comprehensive plan language too, because some of this, some of this came from your comprehensive plan vision statement about neighborhoods.
Yeah, Marcy, then, and actually, this is exactly where it is now. And when it comes up to the planning commission, now there is a comprehensive lang, language in the comp plan that people try to use that, that particular term. So that's, I'm sure that's where it came from.
It, it's, it's a, it's a loaded term. It's, it's a difficult term. It's in, it's a bugaboo of mine. I would like to see it disappear from any document that we're gonna use to guide development going forward.
Um, but I think the intention of this clause here is that individual neighborhoods, and the reason why, for example, we have a middle housing one and a middle housing two is because there is a difference between the different neighborhoods having to do with character, but it's not a neighborhood, it's not neighborhood character. It's just the character of each neighborhood.
Well, you'll recall from prior discussions that I was not in favor of MH1, MH2, MH3. I'm in favor of all varieties of housing everywhere.
All varieties of housing are available everywhere. The only difference between MH1 and 2 and SRR really is the size of the dwelling.
Well, if we're going, if, if that is what you are limiting character of neighborhood to, then let's take out character of neighborhood and talk simply about the size of the dwelling. That would be clear and objective and in my view could not be used in a way, you know, in an obstructive way. But I don't know that anybody could walk around and say any particular neighborhood in, in our town is, this is the character. You know, we're all retired, we're all upper-middle class, we are all white, to, to make, to, to use the worst of what that term has been used for. So if we're not gonna define it in a clear and objective way, I don't think it should appear.
Okay.
For standards.
I think that's a really good point. Brad?
Yeah, this, this may go to a different section, 3.040, but when we're on 4.161 design standards, can you just clarify, Marcy, in a commercial zone, in a C-zone, C1, where we're putting in, or there is residential development, does that still go through design or will that go through design review?
No.
So my concern is that it should though, if it's in a commercial zone and we don't, and so the basis of my question is, is why don't we consider residential that is allowed in a commercial zone? Cause everything else in a commercial zone that's non-residential does go through design review?
Brad, could I suggest that we, I don't wanna table this forever, but I, I also have concerns about what kind of housing is in the commercial district. And I'm wondering if that's because it's not related specifically to the middle housing. I, I also, I, I also wanna have this conversation, but I'm, I'm just, I'm not sure that this is, that this is it. And you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But, but I, I agree with you 100% that it's something that is an issue that we need to address.
So your point is because it's not middle housing, let's not address it now. Okay.
Correct, correct. But add it to the list of things that are critical that rise to the, to the top as we're doing the rest of our review.
Okay.
I, I don't mean to, I.
No, I think Karen, that's valid. Okay.
Okay.
I just don't want it to be two years from now.
Right. I, I agree with you and, and I agree.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, oh, sorry. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, it currently in the commercial zone, residential is not subject to design review. So this is not the first time this issue has been raised. So I think it makes sense to parking lot it in the list, but it's currently not subject to design review.
And I wanna go back to the, to the discussion about the design standards, the purpose. And I, I wonder about when we say quiet residential streets, why don't we say vibrant residential streets? You know, quiet to me, well, I'm not gonna get too picky over the language, I think.
Now, this is, back to throwing it to Scott and the comprehensive plan process, but this is kind of language that I, I wanted to be up to date with the comprehensive plan language as it stands. And this is the kind of language that's there. So I think like, we always knew that this project would influence the comprehensive plan and that the comprehensive plan project would influence this. This is one of those issues, you know, to resolve my part of the project, which is the middle housing ordinance, so it needs to be adopted sooner. I think I would probably, in the next version of this, go more neutral in language and then the comprehensive plan language is, should be further developed for if, if quiet is not the way that you see residential neighborhoods. It's more vibrant, it's more appropriate. That seems like a very, really interesting discussion to have at the comprehensive plan level. And so I will, I will remove reference to that type of thing here kind of in holding pattern for the comprehensive plan process.
Thank you, Marcy. That makes sense.
Okay. Um, so Leila, do you still want, do you still have something?
No, sorry about that.
And Bert?
Unmute Bert.
Gosh, okay. Uh, let's see, list of applicability by housing type, uh, which is part of your design standards. Uh, I think, you know, there might be a couple of extra numbers that might wanna be added. And one, unless it's covered elsewhere, would be like a five-foot minimum garage setback from the primary facade that's facing the street. You know, there, there's a number of things that probably are universal. Uh, and then I think material palette is really important. And so in later, and I'm not sure what section it is, might be in the townhouse section, there's a list of kind of materials and I think that needs a little bit of a tuning. And that might then work its way up into this, this list also. Couple of suggestions.
Yeah, thank you, Bert. Would you be willing to help me develop further the, I think you're talking about the detailed design section, which could possibly be a materiality section as well?
Yeah, I think, I think those, you know, in, in the jurisdictions that I've been involved with, the successful ones have objective standards tied to that that are, you know, less fuzzy and more clear. And I think that in a lot of ways for me is really one of the important aspects of what, what the, you know, our, our village feels like. So I do that. And then, you know, there's other stuff that we just have to make sure that can't happen. And on my street, there's a 18-foot tall carport for an RV that just got built that's facing, you know, the public realm. And that shouldn't be allowed, by gosh. So anyway, as you get into the detailed design guidelines, you know, the, the flexibility for creativity is one thing, but giving stronger guidance to really what makes a great village, I think's gonna be important.
Tom? And then John?
Um, on these design standards, I, I can't evaluate them and I defer to the architects here. Um, I, I just want to know that these are, um, in the main, these are standards that, that people can build too. You know, we're, we're just saying, here's how to build it. That, that a developer is not going to look at this and say, oh, you put something in there that's a deal killer. I can't, I, I can't build any of that, the housing types that we want here if you've got some particular requirement in here. In other words, I, I hear all the time that they're trying to make housing more affordable and easy to build here. And then developers say, yeah, but there's something that I'm, that they require. And it's a deal killer. Uh, so I, I'm just asking generally, these are okay. It's just more how it looks, not, it's not, it's not possible to build.
Several cities that we've worked with that have had middle housing, have been building middle housing since, uh, they were first required to adopt, have these, um, standards in place. I would say that these are minimal. These do not go into materiality, maybe to the extent that Bert is talking about. And, um, Manzanita wants to go further in that area. But to your point, Tom, um, several cities have been working with these successfully and they're
Okay, they're not too onerous for, for, okay.
They're not too onerous for the developer and they're not too onerous for the administrator, um, the city to administer either.
Okay, good point.
Any other, oh, John, go ahead, please.
Well, you just made a good point. Um, however we do this, our, uh, building administrative staff has to enforce it. So, um, we need to, and, and Tom, you know, kind of neighborhood character kind of is a good example of this. But we need to stay away from subjective terms and make it as objective as possible and still, and still keep the, the flexibility somehow. So, uh, again, I'm not a code writer and Marcy, you do a stellar job in that. And you've probably run across this before, but again, um, Scott Gethardt and his staff need to, um, have a definitive way to yes or no some of these issues. Um, and I worry a little bit about, you know, limiting materials because, um, I'm not sure why I'm worried about that. It's just that as an architect, I like flexibility and I like to, I, I like the spirit of the rules better than I like the, um, the, the letter of them. And I know I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth. I'm saying two different things and they're contradictory. But, um, if you could somehow make the, uh, make the, the, the design character definitive, but allow flexibility.
Yeah, let me just give a two-minute overview of what, what is in here. So there is this applicability, uh, table. It tells you which of the, which of these standards apply in to the housing types and to what part of the housing type they apply. So a cottage cluster is going to have more attention paid to the cottages as they face the courtyard. A plaques is going to have more attention paid to where it faces the street. Um, as an example, and that this table explains that. And then there are applicability standards that are very clear and objective. Pretty much a yes, no, um, answer to those. And then we get into the actual standards themselves. And as you can see, um, John, most of these are a choice. You can, um, have, you can, for example, uh, articulation can be achieved. You can get a yes from the administrator if you have
Right.
what these things, so it's kind of a menu. And that's also the way that
Yeah. I did notice that when I read through there that you gave, it can either be this or this or this.
Right.
And any one of them qualifies you for that articulation.
Yeah, so I mean, the goal would be to see some variety in your response, in the responses, right? Not everyone has to do the same thing. And I think the materiality piece, um, that Bert is talking about can be handled the same way. So materiality still comes off of a menu and you have a number of different ways to achieve that. But that's generally the, uh, the spirit of this, um, system. What I've given you at this point for your review is the most basic set. And I'd like to add to it based on what I'm hearing, say, from Bert for materiality. And so at this point, um, if you, or maybe following this meeting, if you have any thing that you would like to see added to this, now's the time.
Marcy, if I could just say one thing about this menu option idea is from a planning perspective and as your planner who has to administer this code with Scott, I, I really love this option. And I think that, uh, you know, folks that want to have the flexibility to choose and also have, uh, you know, a straightforward path, that a clear path, uh, to choose, this really works well. Um, it's been successfully used in a lot of other cities that, that, uh, both Marcy and I work in. So I don't, I, I want you all to know that this is something that's widely used in Oregon and throughout the nation and, and is, and is liked by planners. So it's not a brand new concept, but it's something that I think that we're making work really well here in Manzanita.
So with the, just, um, the last thing I want to talk to you about before we go, um, is the specific cottage cluster design standards. And there are specific ones that, um, apply to cottage clusters. The cottage clusters are very detailed in what the state requires. And, uh, also, I would like to make the point that our cottage cluster sta- design standard, these apply to attached or what we would call courtyard apartment. The cottage cluster and the courtyard apartment are the same housing type. Just the latter is attached and the same standards apply. Um, now I won't go through all of these just really to orient you to that, um, there's this level of detail here and the townhouses focus a lot on how the driveways are accessed in order to avoid the all garage-fronted, uh, townhouses that we tend to see. You have to allow townhouses, um, per the state. But I think that, that, um, what we're trying to do with these design standards is make sure that you don't get snout house versions of townhouses. So there's a shared driveway. We talked about that being applicable to, um, all housing types. So we would, you will see in the next version that this has been extended to all housing types. Um, and another option is shared driveways from the front. So this is a shared, these are shared driveways from the street. This is a shared street to rear, uh, ax, the rear parking. And then this is if you are lucky enough to have, uh, say at the end of a block or the option for an alley, so partial alley or a, a through alley. Okay, so, um, I think that we've covered everything I hope to cover. I've gotten good feedback on the building envelope issues. So we're coming back with a, a final version of the track change edits for you at the next, uh, meeting. And I don't know if this point we want to talk about, um, whether that will be a work session or a public hearing. Or do you want to have that discussion separately? Chair, I would maybe ask you.
Um, I would certainly um, like to hear from everybody. I think it would be helpful to have another work session since there are things that are still up in the air as far as things that you're going to bring back to us. It would be good to have, and, and maybe it's only will be a short work session to go over the additional changes. And we can kind of maybe agree today, um, that what we've done so far, um, is going to pass muster. And we wouldn't be willing to, um, recommend that council accept the work we've done so far. And then just finalize the last bits, um, on the second. How, how, how does everybody feel about that? And then we'll have our formal hearing on the ninth as, as usual. I think it's the ninth, right? I'm open to, open to comments.
Well, the form-based information that we've been discussing for the last, uh, hour long, 45 minutes or so, it's really kind of the first time we've had a discussion about that. And I think we product, probably should look at it in a workshop form at least one other time. The code stuff, I think we're pretty well, you know, we've been, this is like our third iteration through that. And I think we're pretty well versed on that. Um, if we do a workshop, wherever that, you know, on the second or whenever, um, I think we, I think we could limit it to just the form-based information.
Well, there were a couple of things too that Marcy was going to get back to us on a couple of definitions, maybe, and
Wasn't that mostly to do with the form-based stuff or was that the?
I think the only one that wasn't related to the form-based was the definition of dwelling. But the side yard height plane definition and the height and story definitions, those are, I'd say those fall into the form-based category.
Right.
Anybody else have a thought? Go ahead, Bert, unmute yourself.
Okay, uh, well, I, I think we're making really good progress. Uh, I think there's a, uh, some tweaks still needed at a couple of different places uh, in the ordinance language, at least from my perspective. And then I think, uh, more discussion on the form-based aspect is, is definitely warranted. So I would, uh, say, yeah, another kind of work session than the, the final is probably, uh, uh, warranted.
Um, and we've had, we have that meeting set for six o'clock on the second, I believe. Is that?
Yeah, so which is adequate for, you know, everyone will still be awake. Well, I was wondering, um, I was sticking with that number because that's what we had set the public hearing for. You could do four o'clock if that's acceptable to everyone here, because it's not a public hearing. It's a work session and you're holding the public hearing at four on your regular meeting day. So, um,
I just want to make sure that we were accommodating staff.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, we don't, I don't, four o'clock is actually, I think, is better. Uh, but I want to defer to the commission on that and make sure also Marcy can be there.
Okay, Brad got a thumbs up. Marcy gave a thumbs up.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so we'll say four o'clock on the second.
Yep, we'll get that posted on the city calendar.
And, um, I don't know if, I, I want to just call one thing to your attention, Marcy. Um, section 6.060 of the zoning ordinance is, um, this, well, that's the section that lists exceptions. And that 20-yard front setback, um, is, there's some information about that in there and about, you know, a deck and where, how far a deck can extend out in front. So you might want to look at that too and either strike that entirely because it'll be included elsewhere or, um, make sure that those exceptions don't um, disagree.
Right. I mean, we might, we might be able to requisition that exceptions section for some of the things that we're talking about and just reprise it.
Okay. Thank you.
For pointing that out.
Um, yeah, Bert, you, oh, your hand got up down.
Just get the right button. Um, uh, Marcy, I think, uh, like on page 10 of one of these sections, which is like, uh, page, uh, 274 in my PDF, that speaks to the kind of the front yard setback and what can be allowed within the setback. And anyway, I think that one, uh, the way I read it was if we have a 10-yard, 10-foot front yard setback, if that's what we concluded, I don't remember if that's what we concluded, then these would be able to go into that. Is that correct?
If it's an applicable housing type, so that transitional space, yeah, applies to, yes, you're correct.
Universal standard in the immunity, right? Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, heck, if I remember, if it's 10 feet, maybe, maybe that's what it would be. But then I think also tied to that is, I, very important to have the garages setback from the primary facade, you know, six feet or five feet or something like that. In those cases where there is access, uh, from the street to a garage that, you know, we just don't have a big wall. Um, and then the other question I had is on the, uh, the, uh, kind of, uh, stoop and step requirement. Uh, that's, uh, on page nine of that particular document. And, uh, you know, the stairs must be at least three feet, not more than eight feet. And, you know, I know that's, uh, trying to create this front porch language, right? So this kind of, uh, neighbor, neighborly feel of a street. But I don't know how that relates to universal access and the need of mobility of some people.
But it, it's, um, a horizontal transition is allowed as well. It's a vertical or horizontal transition. It's basically, if you're going to have the building closer, you need to have vertical. If you need, if you're going to have a, the building a little bit further back, you can achieve that transition with horizontal um, transition, which is, which allows it to be agreed.
Okay, good. That's all I needed to know. Perfect.
So a choice, it's a choice. It's another one of these choices. Um, well, great. Thank you. I feel like we are making progress. I still feel like we have so much, still feel like we have a lot of work to do. But, um, you wanted a very custom-written middle housing code and that's what we're doing, so. Thank you for your time and attention and, uh, passion about this project. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Yep, it's, um, it's been an education for me. And it's good for my brain to learn new things. So thank you for, for that. Um, Leila or Scott, do we have any updates for our, uh, next few meetings? July 9 meeting?
Yeah, Scott, do you want to chime in? I think we have the, um, subdivision for Third Street.
Yeah.
Will happen in addition to your hearing.
Okay.
Yep, that was it. The subdivision, uh, we'll be reviewing that. And that's for the, um, Aaron's rest on Third.
Okay. Okay. Um, well, thank you all. And I, I think we'll just, um, call it into this meeting. Give ourselves an extra 10 minutes to stew about stuff before you start working on your dinners. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Good work here. See you, Scott and Leila.
Thanks, everyone.